Good evening, Mayor Protem. May we call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Perfect. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code that the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city will convene at a regular meeting on June 17, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Commission chambers that's located on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, 78520. May I proceed with roll call?
Yes, please.
Mayor John Cowan. Mayor Protem Viara.
Present.
Commissioner Martinez.
Present.
Commissioner Macias. Commissioner Gowan.
Present.
Commissioner De Leon.
Present.
And Commissioner Cardenas.
Present.
At this time, we will have the invocation led by Pastor Carlos Navarro, and joining him will be Pastor Burke. And following, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flags of the United States of America and the State of Texas.
Please remain seated for just a moment. Before we do the invocation tonight, I just want to give a quick tribute to a long-term friend and minister here in Brownsville. Forgive me. We were friends for 36 years. Did our ministry training in the same place back in the late 80s. Ken Parks ministered to everyone he came in contact with. He was the president of the Brownsville Ministerial Association for several years. He ministered to children, feeding children, whose whole families were living in the cheap motels here in Brownsville. Made sure that somebody came in from the churches to minister to them. He arranged with restaurants to make sure that they had food. And when COVID came along, it ended that. And at that point, Ken's health was such that he was pretty much bed-bound. And for the last four or five years, he has been running three ministries, doing the same thing in the Philippines from his bed here in South Texas. So many people quit over so many... We have a minor thing happen in our life, and we think we can't do anything anymore. Ken is just an amazing example of the opposite of that. Having no family of his own, he was 100% invested in ministry. I picked up the things from his room yesterday. Other than the wheelchair, the walker, and the mini-fridge, which I donated, I came away with all of his belongings in one box. He was 100% invested in the Kingdom of God. And just want to give thanks for a life like that. And Pastor Carlos?
Can I ask you, please, to stand up? Thank you. Father in heaven, we acknowledge that you are God. You are the God of this city. You're the God of this state, and you're the God of this nation. We come to you, and we thank you so much for giving us the privilege, because it's that, a privilege, to be a citizen of this beautiful city of Brownsville. I'm so happy to see my city moving and moving in the right direction. I'm so happy, I'm so blessed to see my city united and working together for the good, for the next generation. Thank you so much for giving me the privilege and the blessing to be here, calling out to your name. And I'm asking for a blessing upon every single person that is here today under this roof. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Public comment period?
At this time, we're going to take the public comment period out of order to allow for the canvassing of the election results and the swearing-in of our commissioners, and then a brief recess to enjoy with all the lovely people we have here in attendance today.
The canvassing ceremony is item number one. It's the consideration and action on the Resolution Number 2025-067, canvassing and declaring the results of the general election runoff election held on June 7, 2025, for the purpose of electing two members of the City Commission, which is Commissioner-at-Large B. and Commissioner District 4. And for the record, do you want to make note that, President, we have Commissioner Macias at 5:05? The purpose of this item, Mayor Protem and City Commissioners, is that on May 13, that the City Commission did approve a resolution that called the election that was held on June 7, 2025. This requirement is in accordance with the Election Code, which is 67.003 and 67.004, for the purpose of electing at-large B. and a Commissioner for District 4 for a four-year term. The purpose of this item, of course, we do have the quorum of at least two City Commissioners for this one item. Also, it is within the canvassing window. We did receive the final results, which is presented at the dais for you. And this item is approval of staff, and we recommend you approving the item to canvass the results.
Perfect. Commissioners, are there any questions? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
City Commissioner-at-Large B. Item number one is the issuance of the Certificate of Election to City Commissioner Nurith Galansky Pisana.
You have a certificate up front?
Nurith, bring in your family.
Mm-hmm. Read it. Yes.
Amen. Amen.
So after that, is she gonna... After that, you'll do the name plate?
Perfect, thank you. Certificate of Election. In the name and by the authority of the City of Brownsville, Texas, this is to certify that the general municipal runoff election held on June 7, 2025, Nurith Galansky Pisana, was duly elected Commissioner-at-Large B. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused the seal of the City of Brownsville to be affixed on the 17th day of June 2025. Congratulations.
No?
Perfect. Is it oath first or speech?
The oath will be next.
Perfect.
Which is the statement first and the next item?
Perfect. Do we have your...
Oh, Mary Esther Searle is going to give me the oath.
Perfect. Judge, I know.
Oh, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Right here.
Thank you. Thank you. Y entonces, la derecha o, no?
Yeah, you'll raise your right hand.
Yeah.
You'll put your left hand on the Bible and you'll put your right hand.
This is quite challenging.
Okay.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, please repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Nurith Galansky Pisana.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
City Commissioner at-large B.
City Commissioner at-large B.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
What the big business?
Men, men. And did she need, did she need to grab her chair?
Okay, we're good.
No more problems.
Yes.
I drank, uh, this week. It sounds too bottomless. It's hilarious. Very.
Would you better know the transition?
That's it. Oh, uh, the seat or, um, yes. Okay. Okay. Uh, uh. So thank you, everyone, for being here. As you can imagine, I'm really happy to be back. Um, yes, um, I'm very grateful for all the support I've gotten, um, the past six months. I stand here because of the trust and support many of you have bestowed on me. I'm also here because of the hard work and tenacity of many who have stood by me these past six months. First, I would like to thank every single person who helped me over the course of this campaign. Those of you who voted for me, those of you who contributed to my campaign financially, who, who, those of you who asked for a yard sign, organized and sponsored an event, defended me on social media, or simply asked your family and friends to vote for me. All of these little bits contributed to this outcome and I couldn't have done it without any of you. So, um, that's, that's my thank you. Second, um, to my campaign manager and his wife. Um, there are so many details to keep track of, um, during, during a campaign. Um, thank you for keeping me grounded these past six months and making the process easier. Um, I appreciate the many new people I met during this election cycle and those that I got to know better. Your warmth and enthusiasm have motivated me to keep going on. Um, I would also like to name some friends and supporters I am especially grateful for. Um, Ed Garcia, you're, uh, who I saw earlier. Um, uh, Jaime Cortez, who I haven't seen, but I assume is, is probably around here. My friends at the Brownsville Bookworms, um, you have been, um, a great source of, of stability for me the last few months. B Gosage, Richard Hitchcock, and Ida Montelongo. Y Remi Su esposa, muchas gracias. Me estoy muy agradecida de que tú me mandastes el texto al principio de la campaña y estoy agradecida de conocerlos mejor. Um, m- most important of all, I'm lucky to have very close girlfriends who are sitting on the second row, all of you on that row. I get together with you at least once a month, if not better. Y Yvette, tú también, aunque estás. Yvette lives in, in Austin and, um, you, we went to high school together. Um, each one of you plays an important role in my life. Um, you, you provide stability, you make me laugh. The, uh, I couldn't, I couldn't have done it without you. Um, especially thank you for the support. Um, not many of us are lucky to have friends and I have a whole bunch of really good friends. So, um, uh, certainly, let's see, I'm, hope I'm not forgetting anyone. Um, and I could go on and on, but, um, let me just, um, wrap it up. So last cer- certainly will not leave my family. To my parents. Gracias por todo lo que han hecho por mí porque yo sé que es nunca ha sido fácil, no siempre ha sido fácil. I'm the first born, so of course I'm very challenging. But, um, I know you love me and I hope I've made you proud. I'm here because of the two of you, because of how you raised me and because of the example that the two of you have set for me. To my sister Tally. She's over there. She, um, she came into my life when I was three hundred and sixty days old. And I mean, I've never, I don't know, I don't remember a life without her. Um, I'm lucky to have Asher and Levi in my life and I hope that this, this experience shows you that it's possible to reach for the stars. Asher's a seventeen-year-old, he's going to start a senior year in high school. So I want you to know, whatever you set your heart and mind to, you can accomplish it. This is, this is proof of it. Um, Levi, you're younger, but, but it'll, it, it can happen too. Um, finally, my, um, honey bunny, he's watching on TV. Uh, some of you know, I have a boyfriend, he lives in Austin. He's been here since the beginning. He was here when I got the call to, uh, you should consider running. He was here when we made the decision, well, when I made the decision to, to run. He was the one who picked the ace in the, uh, in the lottery and that's why my name was at the top of the ballot. Uh, he was here for the election and, um, he's been here the whole way. And, um, I'll, I'll see him this weekend. Uh, I'm so glad that he's been, he's, he's been very supportive and, um, very helpful during this campaign. Most importantly of all, he tolerates me, um, and accepts me for who I am. So, um, thank you, Marcus. Um, I'll, we'll celebrate this weekend. Um, and, oh. But most important of all, so, uh, th- this is the important part. Um, during the four years that I was the District One City Commissioner, I got to meet many city employees. They are the heart of the city of Brownsville. Um, they come to work with the best intentions to keep Brownsville citizens safe and content. In twenty twenty-four, we lost Elizabeth Walker and Jesse Rodriguez. I loved them both dearly and they were great human beings. They came to work with a smile. They had, they were, had young children and they, they really enjoyed what they did. Um, I'm sad that they were taken too soon. Jesse was only forty years old and, and I think Elizabeth was like forty-three or forty-four. So I want to dedicate these next four years to them because they were the, they exemplified what it means to do city service. Um, so on that note, it's time to get to work and I look forward to representing the entire city of Brownsville now. Um, please continue to, to be engaged in our local government. Always reach out, um, I'm here to listen to you. Thank you.
Congratulations. As we welcome Commissioner Galansky up to the seat, uh, let's offer one more round of applause for sixteen years of service to Commissioner Dr. Rose Gowan.
Uh, City Commissioner, District Four. Item one is the issuance of the certificate of election to the City Commissioner Pedro E. Cardenas, District Four.
Give him a round of applause. Certificate of election. In the name and by the authority of the city of Brownsville, Texas, this is to certify that the general municipal runoff election held on June seventh, twenty twenty-five, Pedro Eduardo Cardenas was duly elected city commissioner, District Four. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused the seal of the city of Brownsville to be affixed this seventeenth day of June, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. At this time, we'd like to call Judge Ignacio. Tortella, please. Any family? The twins, holding the Bible?
Lourdes.
No. Your right hand? I would. Repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Pedro Cardenas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of City Commissioner, District Four.
Of the office of City Commissioner, District Four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yes, before. No, but the other UTRGV. Yes. Yes, they are. It's, uh, Ruben O'Bell. Hey, Ruben O'Bell first and then.
Commissioner Cardenas, if you'd like to share some words.
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, Nacho, thank you once again, Judge, for doing this. This is the second and the last time, at least as a city commissioner, I will be doing this. So thank you, Judge. Thank you all so much for being here on this incredibly important day for me. I want to start by expressing my deepest gratitude to my family, my friends and my amazing team. Your belief in me, your encouragement and your tireless support has carried me through this entire journey. To those who walked with me, made calls, knocked on doors, stayed up light, stayed up late planning and never gave up, you are the heart of this campaign. I am truly honored to have had you by my side. Today is not just a celebration, it's a moment of responsibility. You've placed your trust in me to represent District Four and I do not take that lightly. I promise you this. I will make every single day. I will work every single day with dedication and transparency and with the heart to make our community proud. As we move forward, it is important to remember that progress doesn't happen alone. It takes all of us working together. To continue building a better Brownsville, a city that reflects our values, our dreams and our shared commitment, we need all of us. It's extremely important that we now unite and work side by side to shape the Brownsville we all want and deserve. A city where families feel safe, where businesses can trust, thrive and where our children have opportunities. This is just the beginning. Together, we will work to get, we will, together, we will get to work and we will continue to move for Brownsville forward. Thank you, God bless you all, and let's get to work.
Um, and at this time, we have some remarks that will be made. Uh, Ruben O'Bell and following, we will have, uh, UTRGV.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm wearing, uh, uh, different hats today. I, uh, I rise now and I wanted to hand this over, if possible, to Commissioner Cardenas. And I am here now representing State Senator Charles Shortner. He represents, he's a state senator and he represents, um, District Five. And he's also your good friend, Commissioner. And he asked for us, he couldn't be here today, sends his apologies. But he asked that, uh, we show up today and hand a flag that was flown over the Texas Capitol for you in your honor. And it was flown on June the thirteenth and it's flown in, on, uh, under your name. Also, a sign of leadership. He has a gavel for you, presented to you in honor of your reelection to the city commission. So this comes from him on behalf of himself and his district, District Five. And I wanted to hand this over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The second presentation, um, is I'm now here on behalf of UTRGV. And, uh, Commissioner Galansky, Commissioner Cardenas, congratulations on your reelection to the Brownsville City Commission. UTRGV is proud to continue working alongside you.
UTRGV is proud to continue working alongside you in strengthening our community partnership, one that positively impacts the lives of the university students throughout the Rio Grande Valley. Your reelection is a clear reflection of the trust and confidence of the people of Brownsville have in your leadership. Your dedication to serving this city and the citizens is truly commendable and inspiring. As you begin this new term, we remain committed to supporting you and your, and the entire commission. We pledge to listen, collaborate, and provide any assistance necessary to help address the important issues facing our community. On behalf of Dr. Bailey, the President of UTRGV, Veronica Gonzalez, Senior President for Governmental Relations and Community Relations, Richard Sanchez, who's here, and the rest of the OGR team, we extend our best wishes for continued success in your endeavors and we have some goodie bags for you. Thank you so much for your time.
That's it. That's the one.
At this time, we're going to have a brief recess so that the Commissioners can celebrate a little recess with family and friends. We invite you here. We have some, some items here in the back room for you to refreshments. Oh, is there one more? Oh, my apologies. We have one more presentation.
Good evening. I just want to say what an honor it is to be here today to con, oh, oh, wow, that's fancy. To congratulate both Pedro Cárdenas on his reelection to the City Commission and Nerth Golansky on your election to City Commissioner at large. It is an amazing day today, and each of your victories is more than just a personal achievement. It's a reflection of the trust, respect, and hope our community places in each of you. This leadership is, your, your leadership is thoughtful. Your actions are grounded in service, and your dedication is unwavering. Brownsville is stronger because of you and this commission. And the city of Brownsville's motto, "One City", is clear today because you and everyone here knows that when we stand united, this city thrives. So here's to the continued growth and prosperity of Brownsville under all of y'all's leadership. And to Commissioner Cárdenas, in the past few years, I've seen firsthand the dedication that you have, the passion, the tirelessness that you give to this city, to District 4. And it has been an absolute honor to see someone who truly embodies what a public servant should be. And to thank you for that, I have this platter dedicated and great for you. It's made from Mexican pewter and is ordained with symbols of the Star of the State of Texas, representing the amazing culture and heritage that we have in Brownsville and that which you embody every day. So on, so on the platter, it says, "Presented to the Honorable Pedro Cárdenas, Brownsville City Commissioner, District 4, in recognition of your reelection and exemplary public service."
Thank you, Senator.
And at this time, we will take a short recess. The time is 5:37.
Thank you. Family, friends, you're welcome to join us in the back room, in the hallways. Thank you.
So that's the state representative? That's the state representative?
Mayor Protem, may we reconvene into open session?
Yes.
The time is 6:03 PM. We are back into open session. The next item is the public comment period. Section 2-26 Meetings and Agendas. Number one under Conduct states that a conversation between or among audience members should be conducted outside the meeting room. Attendees should refrain from conversations while the commission is in session. B, cell phones. That attendees must refrain from the operation and use of cellular telephone, payers, etc., or any of the mechanical devices that may disrupt the city commission proceedings. C, placards, banners, or signs are not permitted in the city commission chambers or in any other room in which the city commission conducts a meeting. Including that in this prohibition are the various hats, caps, and visors and t-shirts which may present the settlement as alluded to regarding the placards, banners, and/or signs. D, exhibits, displays, and the visual aid used in connection with the presentation to the city commissioners are permitted. E, only the city commission members and city staff may approach the dais. If a report letter, etc., is to be presented to the city commission, it should be given to the city secretary or staff who will make up the distribution. It is preferred that the item is to be distributed, be given to the city secretary prior to the meeting time. A copy of the item should be made available for the city secretary's official record. F, all comments shall be made to the mayor and the city commission as a whole and not to an individual city commissioners. At this time, we have seven public comments that we received. Out of the seven, one does not wish to speak. At this time, would you like to suspend the rules to allow the six members?
Yes, Commissioner, there are motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules? Second.
All's in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rules are suspended. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
The first speaker is Ms. Yolanda Spease.
It looks like I'm back here at the podium again. I mean, it's not like I'm here for attention or anything. It's just that the concerns I've brought up haven't gone away and they haven't really been addressed. If anything, they're more present than ever. So let me start here. When people say there are no kings in a democracy, they're not being poetic. They're being realistic. They're reminding us that no one is above being questioned and no one is above the law. No matter what their title is or what seat they hold, power doesn't make someone untouchable. It makes them accountable. As Stanley said, "With great power comes great responsibility." We've been talking about this now for years. Whether it's an officer parking in front of a fire hydrant or the general fear that people feel when calling the police. It all ties back to the same thing, trust. Or, in our case, lack thereof. And let's be honest. You can't say you want community input when turned away every time someone actually shows up with it. If I were sitting where you are, I'd be asking myself, "What if she's right? What if something is wrong and we just haven't really looked into it? Wouldn't the responsible thing be to investigate, not assume and dismiss or gaslight, but simply look into it?" And so, people are afraid to call the police even when they're doing everything right. License, check. Insurance, check. Still nervous? That shouldn't be normal. But it is, not just nationally, but right here in good old Brownsville, Texas. So why not be the city that does something differently? The one that sets the standard instead of following it, instead of being complicit? Where officers actually engage with the people they serve and leadership invites criticism? Because it knows that's how real improvement starts. I've been here. I've seen a lot over the past few years that I've been speaking here. And I've heard the same thing from people over and over again. That it feels, "Pues nadie quiere hacer nada." But you don't need to throw out the bank records and start a brand-new bank account. You just need to care enough to get the math right and present it better. Like a friend used to say, "Si lo vas a hacer, hazlo bien, porque lo barato sale caro." Before I go, I would like to ask you guys if someone on the commission would approach me after the meeting or call me? Because several of you have my number. I'd really like to know what steps I need to take to set up a town hall meeting? Because I know that every single one of them has something to say and they're not being heard.
The next speaker is Mr. Sean Ayers.
How's everybody doing? Figured I'd start this off by saying my uncle once told me if you're gonna make a statement...
Mr. Ayers, can we fix this microphone? You just need to put it on the stand. And he's pretty tall. And can you just state your name for the record before you begin? And your time will start again. Thank you.
My name is Sean Ayers.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to start this off by saying my uncle told me if you're gonna make a statement, make a statement. Now I'm gonna quote Trump. "We do a little bit of trolling. Y'all troll random people on Facebook. I'll troll an entire town council meeting." I just wanted to start off by saying it is so nice not seeing the morbidly obese. Every time I cross the border, running to city vans day and night, bringing Haitian and Venezuelan gang members over here. I'm glad that happened. My girlfriend also told me that I should bring up the fact that she's smart enough to respect this country's immigration laws. That's why she stays over there. She understands the concept of illegal and illegal immigration. And she lives in Mexico. And she's doing everything she can right now to get her visa because she wasn't given $5,000 and a bunch of free benefits. Now besides that, I just wanted to say that...
Mayor Protem, may we reconvene into open session?
Yes.
The time is six, 6:03 PM. We are back into open session. The next item is the public comment period. Section two dash twenty-six meetings and agendas. Number one under conduct states that a conversation between or among audience members should be conducted outside the meeting room. Attendees should refrain from conversations while the commission is in session. B, cell phones, that attendees must refrain from the operation and use of the cellular telephone, patrons, etc., or any of the mechanical devices that may disrupt the city commission proceedings. C, placards, banners, or signs are not permitted in the city commission chambers or in any other room in which the city commission conducts a meeting. Including that, in this prohibition are the various hats, caps, and visors and t-shirts, which may present the settlement as alluded to regarding the placards, banners, and/or signs. D, exhibits, displays, and the visual aid used in connection with the presentation to the city commissioners are permitted. E, only the city commission members and city staff may approach the dais. If a report letter, etc., is to be presented to the city commission, it should be given to the city secretary or staff who will make up the distribution. It is preferred that the item is to be distributed, be given to the city secretary prior to the meeting time. A copy of the item should be made available for the city secretary's official record. F, all comments shall be made to the mayor and the city commission as a whole and not to an individual city commissioners. At this time, we have seven public comments that we received. Out of the seven, one does not wish to speak. At this time, would you like to suspend the rules to allow the six members?
Yes, Commissioners, there are motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rules are suspended. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
The first speaker is Ms. Yolanda Spease.
It looks like I'm back here at the podium again. I mean, it's not like I'm here for attention or anything. It just, it's just that the concerns I've brought up haven't gone away and they haven't really been addressed. If anything, they're more present than ever. So let me start here. When people say there are no kings in a democracy, they're not being poetic, they're being realistic. They're reminding us that no one is above being questioned and no one is above the law. No matter what their title is or what seat they hold, power doesn't make someone untouchable. It makes them accountable. As Stanley said, "With great power comes great responsibility." We've been talking about this now for years, whether it's an officer parking in front of a fire hydrant or the general fear that people feel when calling the police. It all ties back to the same thing, trust. Or, in our case, lack thereof. And let's be honest, you can't say you want community input when turn away every time someone actually shows up with it. If I were sitting where you are, I'd be asking myself, what if she's right? What if something is wrong and we just haven't really looked into it? Wouldn't the responsible thing be to investigate, not assume and dismiss or gaslight, but simply look into it? And so, people are afraid to call the police even when they're doing everything right. License, check. Insurance, check. Still nervous? That shouldn't be normal. But it is, not just nationally, but right here in good old Brownsville, Texas. So why not be the city that does something differently? The one that sets the standard instead of following it, instead of being complicit, where officers actually engage with the people they serve and leadership invites criticism because it knows that's how real improvement starts. I've been here, I've seen a lot over the past few years that I've been speaking here, and I've heard the same thing people, from people over and over again, that it feels, pues nadie quiere hacer nada, but you don't need to throw out the bank records and start a brand-new bank account. You just need to care enough to get the math right and present it better. Like a friend used to say, si lo vas a hacer, hazlo bien, porque lo barato sale caro. Before I go, I would like to ask you guys if someone on the commission would approach me after the meeting or call me because some, several of you have my number. I'd really like to know what steps I need to take to set up a town hall meeting because I know that every single one of them has something to say and they're not being heard.
The next speaker is Mr. Sean Ayers.
How's everybody doing? Figured I'd start this off by saying my uncle once told me if you're gonna make a statement...
Mr. Ayers, can we fix this microphone? He just needs to put it on the stand, and he's pretty tall. And can you just state your name for the record before you begin, and your time will start again? Thank you.
My name is Sean Ayers.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to start this off by saying my uncle told me if you're gonna make a statement, make a statement. Now I'm gonna quote Trump. We do a little bit of trolling. Y'all troll random people on Facebook, I'll troll an entire town council meeting. I just wanted to start off by saying it is so nice not seeing the morbidly obese. Every time I cross the border, running to city vans, day and night, bringing Haitian and Venezuelan gang members over here, I'm glad that happened. My girlfriend also told me that I should bring up the fact that she's smart enough to respect this country's immigration laws, that's why she stays over there. She understands the concept of illegal and illegal immigration, and she lives in Mexico, and she's doing everything she can right now to get her visa because she wasn't given $5,000 and a bunch of free benefits. Now, besides that, I just wanted to say that Trump is your president, ha, ha, ha. Republicans are your House and Senate, cope and see. And also, Zini's little liberal case was shot down. Kilmar's back in the country and he's facing ninety years, and the feds are batting ninety-eight percent on a conviction rate. So with that being saying, with that being said, I hope everybody in here that's a Democrat gets to cry for the next four years.
Next, we have Mr. Marco Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Marco Garcia. I'm representing Peacock Shop Bar off of Pablo Quiselle in Morrison area, the north side. I'd like to call that an entertainment district, which I believe it should be called an entertainment district. I'm here in front of you just to express my concern about the area. There's been a lot of new places that I've opened up. Peacock's opened up in 2017. I believe we were the fourth or fifth bar within maybe a half-mile radius that opened up in 2017, and since then, I believe there's twelve to fifteen bars and restaurants local. I think the latest numbers, one of my other colleagues here will give you some other numbers later, but I believe eight new bars have opened up in the last eighteen months. And with that being said, that's a lot more people that get influx into the area. And because of that, there's been a lot of social media presence there on incidents that have happened. And because of that, it's been hurting our businesses. So what I'm asking here today from the city commission and all is to help us out, help us out there in the north area because of all of this bad publicity we've been getting. There's been a lot of fights and different things, and it's hurting our businesses. So we're getting together to see what we can do to get more police presence in the area. The police presence in the area really, really does help out. I have firsthand experience in that with our bar that opened up, Peacock's, back in 2010 in the city of McAllen in the downtown entertainment district. Back in 2010, that place was the best spot to be, you know, everyone was there down in the entertainment district in McAllen. And it went from 2010, 2011, 2012, thirteen, and then it just went down the hill because there was not enough police presence in that area. I can see what can happen, it can happen very, very quickly to go from up here to down here, and that's what happened in McAllen. And I'm glad we're talking about this now, and hopefully we can get more presence there to help us out, to deter any of these incidents that may be happening or spreading around social media, giving, you know, the city of Brownsville a bad name. You know, I have more than one business here. Another business we have is Illuminations. We're about to start a new building off of Rventores. So like I said, I'm not originally from Brownsville, I'm from, you know, PSJA area, but I do have two businesses here in Brownsville. Brownsville's a great area, I love it. You know, we do really well in this area, and I'm glad that we, that I'm contributing to the city of Brownsville. There's a lot of growth here, and I want to stay here. We've been very, very blessed to be here in the city, and I would just, you know, humbly ask for your guys' help, you know, to get more representation there in that area on the north side, entertainment district, just so that our business can continue to do well and succeed, you know, and just help us out if we can. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Juan Diego De Leon. Seeing none, move on to the next speaker, Mr. Marino Jr.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mariano Hid Jr., and I'm one of the owners of Shot Republic and a proud member of the Brownsville community. I'm here today to speak on an issue that's becoming increasingly urgent, the need for regular police presence in our entertainment district along Pablo Quesad Boulevard, particularly during late night hours. Over the last year and a half, the city zoning department has approved eight new establishments in this area. This growth is exciting, and it speaks to the vibrancy and potential of our local economy. But with that growth comes responsibility. Unfortunately, while the numbers of venues have increased, there's been no clear plan to ensure the safety of our patrons once those doors close for the night. From 1:00 AM to 3:00 AM, the window when most businesses close and foot traffic surges, we've seen an uptick in fights, disturbances, and public nuisances. These are not isolated incidents, and while we do our best as business owners to maintain safe environments, we need the city's support to keep the entire district safe beyond our front doors. I'm not here to complain, I'm here to ask for a solution. A consistent police presence during these critical hours would not only deter violence but reassure our guests, protect our staff, and show that our city takes safety serious as nightlife grows. We're asking for a partnership. We're investing in the city, and we simply ask that the city help us protect that investment, and more importantly, protect the people enjoying what Brownsville has to offer. Thank you for your time and your service to this community.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Diablo Velasquez. Seeing none, moving on to the proclamation portion of the agenda. Is the Texas Department of the Family and Protective Services, the Adult Protective Services?
Hey, we have anybody here representing Adult Protective Services, Family and Protective Services? If you can please come up here. It's an honor today to be reading this proclamation. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And whereas we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas there were 123,852 reports of abuse, older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in 2024. And whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas elder abuse is everyone's business, it's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. And now therefore we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby commend Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, done on this, the seventeenth day of June, 2025. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for this proclamation and for giving us the opportunity to express our gratitude to our community for assisting us in keeping our most vulnerable adults safe. And also take this opportunity to remind everybody that elder abuse is everyone's business, and we appreciate the assistance to protect the unprotected by reporting any suspected abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation to us. And on our website or our 1-800 number, which I will state for the record, it's 1-800-252-5400. Again, thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you.
Of the consent agenda items?
Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. There is a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Of the public hearing portion, item number one, is a public hearing in action on resolution number 2025-068, dissolving the Madera Espiritu Santa Public Improvement District, Pid number one, and also providing the official notice of the Pids' dissolution to the Cameron County Clerk as required by Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code.
I think we have the city attorney on. However, this is, what we did is we've approved, previously approved the Mededa Public Improvement District. There was an error on some of the noticing that we noticed and also on some of the property alignment, and so what we're doing is dissolving that Pid and then reinstating it. So this is the first action, so if you want to start, open the public hearing.
Sure. Do you have any questions before we do that, Commissioners? No? Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and state your name.
My name is Dennis Sanchez, I'm here on behalf of Mededa. There are, I think, four items on the agenda today, and we formed this, originally, the original Pid was formed about two years ago, and it's been decided that there's some language in the initial creation document that was omitted that's really necessary to be there. And so the best course of action would be to dissolve one and concurrently form another one, and that's what's going to be on the agenda today. We've been in close touch with the, with the city and the city attorney's office, and all of the attorneys are working on it, and so nobody feels, no, there's no issues, everybody's on board and all in the same direction. So I would ask that it be approved on all four items. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak to us, Mr. Sanchez. Move to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing closed?
Second.
There is a motion. Second, is there any discussion? Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public hearing, item number two, is a, is a public hearing in action on resolution number 2025-069, making the findings that related to the Mededa Espiritu Santa Public Improvement District, number one, including the availability of the special supplement services, the estimated operation and maintenance costs, the boundaries of the district, the method of assessment, and the apportionment of costs between the city of Brownsville and the district, and establishing the Madera Espiritu Santa Pid, number one, and also providing the official notice of the Pids' establishment to the Cameron County Clerk as required by Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code.
I stated this establishment of the Pid.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter, obviously, come up to the microphone and state your name. Mr. Sanchez, you could say it all over again. I'm kidding. Move. Is there?
On this particular item, that, one of the issues that was raised was the manner of apportionment. It started off as being every lot being charged so much money, but lots vary in size, so then we went to square footage. But my sister had the best idea, which was to try and apportion it based on valuation, which is an item that's going to have to be addressed with the attorneys from both sides to try and come up with the right formula that would allow that to occur, just like everybody gets taxed on their value of their home, it'd be the same thing here. And that's the only real issue that's pending. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Sanchez. Move to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing closed.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good motion carries.
Item number three is a, is a public hearing in the action on the first reading on ordinance number 235-2025-010 Pid, to rezone from the agricultural AG to the residential single-family R1 with the plant development district to allow a single-family residential development with reduced lot sizes and increase the density for 8.98 acres of land, more or less, out of Lot 11, Block 110, El Hadle Resubdivision, Cameron County, Texas, located on 6205 Houston Road in Brownsville, Texas, 78521, as shown in Exhibit Eight.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This request is a rezone to go from agriculture to residential single-family with a plant development district to basically have the zoning change be subject to conditions to allow reduced lot sizes and increased density. This property is fronting Houston Road, and this is a 200-foot buffer map, there were thirty mailouts and zero written opposition. And as you can see in the area, what predominates is single-family residences, the same of what's being proposed by this development. And as you can see from the configuration of the property, it's somewhat odd-shaped, and for this reason is why the developer is requesting the plant development district and the conditions that they're proposing to be established along with the rezoning. Because of the additional dedication of right-of-way, because of the not-yet-known distance of the Rosaca Bank to where the lot lines, to where the lot line is going to start for those lots that are abiding the Rosaca, they are requesting this accommodation. Just to point out as well, this property was recently annexed into the city last meeting, I'm sorry, two meetings ago, and by default it comes into the city with an ag zoning. To the south, there is residential single-family, residential transition, I'm sorry, residential suburban, residential estate, and to the north, there is extraterritorial jurisdiction. This is another aerial view of the property. And this is just pointing out where the property is located, and this is basically in a screenshot from our thoroughfare map. This roadway is to be a collector, which means it has to have an 80-foot right-of-way. It currently exists as a 40-foot right-of-way, therefore, when they plat the property, they will have to dedicate an additional 20 feet on their side. This is a rough layout of what is being proposed by the developer. It's approximate, right now the count is approximately 41 lots, and as mentioned, because of the additional right-of-way dedication and because of the odd configuration of the property, they're requesting these accommodations. Right now, because this is a, let's say, very preliminary sketch of what the overall outcome of the development will be, they are thinking it might be between 39 and 41 lots. And so PMZ, they recommend the approval to rezone from agriculture to residential single-family. And just to point out the conditions that they're proposing, so the reduced lot size in residential single-family is 5,000, the established lot size is 5,000 square feet, they're requesting between 4,500 square feet and 5,000 square feet, just to give them that wiggle room to be able to accommodate the development. And basically, because the lots are being reduced, the density is going to increase per acre. So from a standard development that would have three dwelling units per acre, this one is proposing 4.6 rather than the three. Any questions? Sure.
Okay, yeah, so the houses, for example, that are on the edge, the lots, you know, the ones that abut with Houston Road, where, like, how big are those lots? Because with the setbacks and then the traffic's going to be there, and it looks like a narrow road.
Right, so as mentioned, the road currently exists as a 40-foot right-of-way. They would dedicate an additional 20 feet to comply with the thoroughfare plan. Right now, the lots that are abiding the road, based on this sketch, they are complying with the 5,000-square-foot requirement. Now, because of the additional right-of-way dedication, they do foresee that it's going to be slightly reduced. That's why they're proposing that range of 4,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet, and that's where they will be able to fit or accommodate the final size of the lot after the dedications and the overall configuration, once the drainage district tells them where that, where they will be able to have that, the edge of water for the development.
But it conforms then with all, besides the variance that you're wanting for those, for the lots to add density, it all conforms with rules of like safety and stuff, given that the traffic is going to be right there?
Well, they would, they would have to comply. Once it goes through the subdivision process, it's going to be vetted by the different departments, zoning, engineering, the utilities, multimodal department, everyone will take a look at it and make their determination to ensure that it is in compliance with codes.
I'll move to approve because it is just the rezoning.
Public comment. Yes, it is. So this is a, any other questions first? This is a public comment. If there's anybody from the audience that wishes to address this matter, please step to the microphone and state your name. I move to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry.
I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Martine.
Items for the individual consideration, action item number one is the consideration and action on the first reading on ordinance number 235-2025-009, PD, to rezone from the residential estates, RE, to the residential transition, R3, with the planned development district to allow the multifamily development with the limitations on density and structure height for Lot 2, Iglesia Cristiana Leroy de los Valle, number 2, Cameron County, Texas, located at North Central Avenue, Brownsville, Texas, 78526, as shown in Exhibit 8.
So similar to the previous request, this is also a rezone from residential estate to residential transition to accommodate a multifamily development. However, originally, it was presented just as a rezone. Because there were concerns presented at the commission by neighboring residents, we, the department spoke to the developer to see if they were open to the idea of conditioning the zoning change with a planned development district. After meeting with the developer, the following conditions were established. With the planned development district, we put a cap on the density at 34 dwelling units per acre, I'm sorry, 34 dwelling units on the overall property, which would be equivalent to 17 duplex, and a cap on the structural height to one story. So as mentioned, the current zoning is residential estate, the proposed zoning is residential transition to accommodate the duplex use, and the property is fronting North Central Avenue. And just to provide some history on this case, this was originally presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 1st, where the recommendation to approve was given by the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone from residential estate to residential transition. After that, or with that rezoning, the residential transition zoning designation allowed a maximum density of 32 units per acre, and with the area of the property, which is 2.4 acres, it allowed a maximum number of units of 72, which would be equivalent to 36 duplex. After this meeting, the item was presented at City Commission for first reading on May 20th of 2025, and the action to table, based on concerns expressed by neighbors, by neighboring residents, was basically issued by the commission. Residents within the extraterritorial jurisdiction expressed concerns related to density, public safety, traffic, road conditions, and drainage. And the department, as a response, decided to meet with, again, with the developer to address the concerns that these residents had. Again, during the meeting, these two conditions were proposed, and the developer agreed on these conditions. As a supplemental commitment, the developer is committing to provide sufficient parking as per established ordinances and install adequate drainage facilities, again, as per established codes. This is a 200-foot buffer map, there were 13 mailouts and zero written opposition. This is a zoning map. What predominates in the area is residential state, there's residential single-family to the west, residential transition to the south, as well as residential suburban. And this is another aerial view of the property. And this is a draft or conceptual plan of what they would be proposing after the conditioning of the rezone. So PMZ, they recommend the approval for the rezoning from residential estate to residential transition. However, the revised proposal is now incorporating the planned development to cap the density at 34 dwelling units and cap structural height to one store. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission? I don't have a question either, but I can tell you thank you guys very much for all that work. I mean, going back and forth with all these people and having meetings, I think, is very important, especially, I mean, it's, it's the right thing to do, and I know it's time costly, and, but thank you all so much for that work, Martine, and the team.
Yes, for me, it's just important for constituents to vocalize what the issues in their area are, because nobody knows more than the ones that reside there, and so I love to hear them out, and they did share out the issues that you mentioned, and I'm seeing here that some of those solutions would be in reference to the drainage, that they will establish 30-foot drainage easements?
Yes, and we can speak on those. For example, when the current developer bought the property, it had just been platted to address and to comply with drainage conditions, or I'm sorry, drainage requirements, during the plating process, they established 30-foot drainage easements to accommodate better runoff for the property. And also, to address the concern about to the width of the road, they dedicated additional right-of-way. So the road originally existed at 60-foot right-of-way, they dedicated an additional 55 feet, and now it's, it has an overall space of 110 feet to accommodate future road expansions or road improvements.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate the collaboration, because it takes everyone, I know it can be a headache, planning and zoning is not the easiest thing to go through, and so adding these additional steps can bring headaches, but at the end of the day, it's just to ensure that the area sees these improvements. I did want to ask Mr. Doro, did we end up talking to PUB in reference to, there was also another complaint with like sewage, they brought up smells, I don't know, we were able to reach out?
So this area is serviced by septic systems, they do have a sewer line that would require an extension to the property.
Thank you.
Add two quick inquiries. This is not a public comment, I mean, public hearing, right? Is it closed already?
There is, this is not, this is not, it's individual consideration.
Okay, and my second inquiry was just asking Commissioner De Leon, since we tabled this, do you have any extra questions, are you okay with this? We tabled this the last meeting because you had concerns, are you good? Are you?
The, the problem, or the, I guess the concern was drainage, and make sure that it was going to be sufficient to be able to handle, so that we don't go through other problems like other subdivisions are having right now, and it was a big concern for the, I guess, the residents across the street that are having the drainage problems.
Sure.
So staff met with Commissioner De Leon, right, to go over your concerns?
Yes, regarding the drainage, when they submit their plans for approval, they'll be reviewed to make sure they comply with our current drainage policies. Anybody else? I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, any other discussion now? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Martine.
Thank you.
Salute.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good, meeting adjourned.